Good evening, everyone. I'll call this city council meeting to order. I don't see anybody for the open forum. So I'd ask everybody to please stand while we say the Pledge of Allegiance together.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This time I'd ask the approval of the minutes of the special city council work session of June 15th, 2015, the special city council closed executive session of June 18th, 2015, the special concurrent city council community service commission work session of June 23rd, 2015, and the regular city council meeting of June 23rd, 2015.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. We have hats off to hometown hits and some council discussion. I'm gonna open it up first, though, with Kristin Asher. There have been some phone calls and even our acting director has talked about phone calls she's received. I've received them, we've gotten emails and such, and we'd like to hear about what's gonna happen with this Portland reconstruction. Why is it taking so long? When's it gonna start? All this. Why we're closing the whole road? Oh, we do that one, okay.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. The road closure signs went up last week and we started getting the phone calls right away. So we've been anticipating this project, in fact, I have for the last 11 years. That's one of the first things I brought up to Mike Eastling was when are we gonna do something about the condition of Portland and the sidewalks and that. So I'm kind of excited to see this get going. But the tree removals and there will be a detour closure. I got... So, is this auto zoom or do I have to do this?
It should auto zoom.
Okay. I got a map to show the detours. So, there's a detour route that is happening tomorrow and this is gonna be in effect. This is the official detour for the whole year is gonna be from 77th Street to Nicollet to 66th Street. And really, when I say year, I mean like the next couple months because the construction season is officially over around November 15th. And then the purple line here is where the Metro Transit buses will be running and that is from... They'll run up Portland to 73rd and then they will go west to Nicollet and then up to 66th Street and back and they'll meet back up with Portland at the roundabout. And the red line that I'm showing there is how you will be accessing City Hall from the north. So the best way to get to City Hall for employees and visitors would be to go through the roundabout or come down 67th Street and then access it that way. The red is actually local access only. So we're trying to keep the Portland open as much as possible for the residents that live there to get in and out of their driveways at night. But that won't always be possible and the reason is we are replacing all the utilities underground as well. So that means all the water, all the storm sewer, all the sanitary sewer lines that run along Portland Avenue, along with all the private utilities that are underground there that need to be protected while we replace our city lines will be there. It's long... There's services at every house. There's a sanitary sewer service and there's a water sewer service that's being replaced to the property line. And that's not quick-moving work. The contractor that we have is Henches, same contractor that did 77th, 76th Street Metro Sewer Project. So we're confident that they know what they're doing and they can move quickly. I was amazed at how quickly they got through that project. But the longest that it took them to go anywhere was 11th Avenue and that's because of the similarities that 11th Avenue has to Portland is that all those services and replacing those mains, which we didn't have on 76th Street. We just had the crossings at every avenue, so.
Do we have any special needs, folks?
There are a couple, yep, and we're aware of them. Bus users as well, special needs.
Okay, so that we're... We can kind of accommodate them, okay?
Yeah, getting out and working with Metro Transit on the route and finding out the best way to get there and then getting people in and out. We just need to know. Even, in fact, if there is an event that you know you're having on the weekends, like a graduation or something that you're doing, if we know, we can work with the contractor and they'll do the best they can to get you in and out of your property.
So why four months?
Well, the contract that the contractor's working under right now, they have until November 15th to work this year. And their plan is to get 67th to 70th done. So they're gonna start working at 70th Street because that's the lowest area for our storm sewer, so they like to start at the low end and then work up where the water flows. And also 70th Street from Portland to 5th will be reconstructed. There's a 48-inch, or no, it's 84-inch box that's going in for, to convey the storm water out of the area. And so that will be disrupted as well. So they'll get that done this year and then they'll start at 70th, work north to 67th and complete that and they're committed to getting that done. If they get that done early, say October, early in October, they may continue south. But they're going to button it up with a pavement surface before winter comes. So the road will be open over the winter.
Open and winter.
And then they're gonna hit it as soon as the frost is lifted in the spring. So it could be as early as April, end of April, that they'll start and then they'll work south, further south until they've completed it.
Okay.
Right now, their substantial completion date, which doesn't mean they have to be done, but they need to have the road open basically, is end of July.
And so where would people find information on this?
Well, that's... You could go to richfieldsweetstreets.org. If you go to find out what it's about, you can find Portland Avenue. And then when you get there, there's a link to the latest updates and Liz tries to update it whenever she learns anything new. Also, you can sign up for emails if you go to the richfieldsweetstreets.org and you can get email updates. You'll get email updates on more than just Portland, but right now Portland's pretty much what, all that's happening, so.
Okay.
I think that's it. Unless there's other questions.
Questions, council? I want to thank you. Okay, thank you. You know, I had somebody slip in an open forum right here at the minute. Do you mind if we just go ahead and do this?
Sure.
Linda Nemitz. And you have approximately three minutes.
My name is Linda Nemitz. I live in Richfield and they're putting in a complex of four attached buildings. And I was at the meeting and it sounded like a good plan with double garage. When Terry and I went and looked at that, we saw that the lots are gonna be very narrow and the backyards have apartment buildings looking right there. And I'm wondering who is going to buy these properties and if they aren't sold, who will be living in them? Or the townhouses, who will be living them? And I do think they need a fence behind in order to utilize their backyard because otherwise the apartments would be right there. So I don't know that the plan was as complete as I had originally thought.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for coming. Can staff follow up? Okay, appreciate that. That's a good oversight. Thank you for coming tonight. So hats off to hometown hits. That was my first item. So that Edwina doesn't take it all, I'm gonna start Pat. Pat Elliott?
You know, I don't have an awful lot to say other than that. I can't tell you how many times I've heard comments that up to this point in the summer, it's been kind of a summer you dream of. It's cool in the evening, it's cool in the morning, it gets nice during the day. And what I'm really enjoying, and I saw Jim Topitz offer, and so I'm gonna kind of shout out in his direction. I walk past Fairwood Park, Monroe Park, I get to Madison every once in a while, and it is a testament to the changeover that's going on in our neighborhoods. I've never seen so many kids out playing on the playground equipment. Most, if not all, of them have been updated in the last four or five years. And I think for someone like myself that's lived in Richfield for a long time and hopes to be here until whenever, walking by parks and seeing the kids enjoying and being out and playing the grass and playing in the streets, which I said before, baseball in the streets is still one of my favorite things to watch kids do. But there has been such a changeover and there's such an abundance of youth and vibrancy and excitement going on that you can't help but feel good about where we are and where we're going.
All the kids.
Yeah.
If I may, while you've mentioned that, Councilmember Elliott, we just completed Garfield Park. The play equipment was replaced there and it's awesome and it's getting used. And that's a park that hasn't really been played in in a long time and that all changes now.
Yeah, that's great.
Garfield Park is on 63rd Street and Garfield, right between Lyndale and Nicollet on 63rd.
Oh, excuse me, Jim, before you leave, I wanted to... I just wanted to, you know, congratulate you on also putting that malt shop lawn sign up. It's not a lawn sign, but for some reason I think that way. But anyway, it's really good and that's a good, it's a compliment. And then the one that's not a compliment is that, you know, we're giving in too much to temptation, so if I gain too much weight, it's your fault.
Thank you.
Well, if Jim's still there, can he talk about the Urban Marathon that's coming up? So might as well get you your dimes worth.
Thank you, Councilmember Fitz Henry. On August 1st, just a couple weeks from now, we have our, I think it's our 11th annual race. This race is a half marathon that goes through Richfield, starts at the ice arena, ends at the ice arena. And all the pro seats go to our Wood Lake Nature Center. We have about 1,500 runners all together and you're the one that leads them all on your motorcycle. And so far, so good. We have everything in place and we really look forward to the neighbors getting involved that especially live on the course. We really depend on our residents to really welcome these runners. I mean, it really is a good opportunity for us to show the rest of the metro area, because they come from all over, how special Richfield is.
That's nice.
Thank you.
That's very nice. And Councilmember Garcia?
Okay.
It's a short list, I see.
It's a short list. Okay, first I wanted to, you know, as someone who has worked at FEEP as a volunteer, they usually have a back-to-school backpacks in August for kids that are entering in 12th, kindergarten to 12th grade. And one of the things that I like is they'll give the child a backpack and in that backpack are things that, like if you're in 4th grade or 12th grade or whatever. And that event includes a scientific calculator and all kinds of stuff that's meant for that one class. So that started today and will end August the 11th. So if you have, if you have any supplies or if you have any money to donate or if you can, you know, just stop buying and buy a couple of backpacks, that would really, really help them out and gets our kids, you know, started in the right way. Another going on to the black back porch at the Bartholomew House, which is a Richfield Historical Society, there will be someone there on... Jeez, did I not put a date? I can't believe this, I didn't put a date.
I can't either. You missed something?
Uh-uh, Jim?
Jim will look it up for you.
Yeah, anyway, Kathy Vernon will be there and it's gonna be a magic show. You know when it is? It's tomorrow, I believe.
Tomorrow evening?
Uh-huh.
Tomorrow evening.
It's 7:00 PM.
7:00 PM, okay.
Well, I mean, kids would really love this, as so would everybody else. But, and then going on to, this is sponsored also by the Historical Society, is the Antique Appraisals at Gramercy. And that will be July the 25th from 10:00 AM until 1:00 PM. You do have to register and you do have to pay a fee to come. And so register as early as you can because it's, the space is filling up. And the deadline to register is July the 20th. And that phone number is 861-1378. And then finally, we have National Night Out on August the 4th. And that starts at 5:45 and ends at 9:15. And that is just really, it's gotten to be really fun to attend as many of these as possible. And sometimes I, you know, I kind of am, if I have a little time left, I'll go to the east side, because that was the side I represented a long years ago. But anyway, it's a great, great opportunity, so I hope all of you will participate.
I just want to say thank you to the crew, the staff and pass on my accolades to the crew. The roads were put in over in my neighborhood and they're fabulous. They really are great. And I'm sure the other neighborhoods are also enjoying this. This was, they did a really great job and they got it done. When the rest of the neighborhoods get done, the whole city in five years, this will be a huge, huge advantage for us because we know one thing, the costs are only gonna go up. So I also wanted to say accolades to the Fourth of July Committee. This was some record attendance out there that I saw. It was the busiest family night I have ever been to. And I hear the street dance was absolutely packed. And then I was there for the Fourth of July picnic and the parade and everything. And it was, it was a great turnout. We had great weather and we had a great crowd with very little going on, mostly family fun, and we really enjoy that. So I want to thank all the people who pulled together and our police staff for being there and helping us out. I also want to share a story because it's not often that I get a phone call like this. Usually people call the mayor to complain, even some of the council members. But I got a fabulous, wonderful call from a gentleman who is actually homeless and actually will hopefully soon be a Richfield resident. And he's a vet who is suffering from a lot of things that our vets do, PTSD and addiction and other things. And he made, he got stopped by one of our police officers. He was panhandling just to try to get some money for some food. And our officer, and I won't use his name because he hasn't given me permission yet, stopped and he thought he was gonna get picked up and told to leave. And instead, he took him to Chipotle and bought him a meal. And not only did he do that, but later on, a couple days later, he was at Pizza Luce and he didn't have quite enough money. And they said, "Well, if you can't pay, we're gonna call the police." And they called the police and the same officer showed up and he made the difference in the meal, just a little over a dollar, and paid for his meal. And he says, "I don't know why you're doing this." He says, "Well, I'm a Marine like you were and I just think we should respect our veterans." And he was nearly in tears over the phone. He says, "I've never had anyone be so kind to me in a city like this." So isn't that a wonderful, wonderful aspiration of our city and shows what we really are about and how our officers really care about the people who are in our city, no matter what their circumstances are in their life? So accolades to our police department, I just wanted to say that. Councilmember Howard?
Well, I can't top that. That was a wonderful story, Mayor. I just, a couple of things have already been mentioned, but I too want to just thank everybody who came out in our city over the Fourth weekend. I think what makes it such a great time is because it's really a celebration of our whole city. And two, the family night at the park was just hopping with children all over the place and it was a wonderful time and nothing but smiles during the parade as well. And the street's just full of people. So thank you to the people of Richfield who came out and celebrated. That was my main thing I wanted to raise. Oh, Councilmember Garcia mentioned National Night Out. I wonder, is there a spot online where folks could go if they want to register their neighborhood or find out if their neighborhood, their block is having a party?
Councilmember Howard, they can call Jill Mecklenburg, our crime prevention specialist, and register their block. And then she'll make sure it's on the list and they get visits from police and fire and get the handouts and everything.
Great, very good, thanks.
Okay, my turn. I'm gonna piggyback on the Fourth. It was awesome this year. Living the closest over there, we didn't have any trouble this year. I was just amazed. People were respectful. When they left there, we didn't have a whole bunch of people racing out of there. They even picked up their garbage this year, so I didn't have to go around the neighborhood. So I don't know what we did to change it, but I liked the change. The car show was awesome. The group over there, it was interesting because it wasn't just like back to the 50s. We had young people with cars with big boom boxes and lights and hydraulics and that. And the mix was just so unique to see where you'd see different groups of aged groups going to look at the older cars and then the old guys were looking at what the new cars had in them. And so it was just so interactive, it was fun. And the street dance, you guys picked a great band this year. Boy, they had a variety of music. Everybody commented how we actually had a great night for the street dance and all the old Richfield folks came back into town to say hi and it was good to see you all there. So things went well for the Fourth.
And can I say something, Mayor?
Sure.
I was not involved in the Fourth of July this time around. That was because I had a family emergency and I want to tell the constituents that called that I am still working on your issue.
Yeah, I know, they wonder when they don't see somebody show up, right?
I know.
Something, yeah. Sorry you were so busy and you missed a great time, Edwina. At this time, I'd ask for the council approval of the agenda with the removal of items seven and eight.
So moved.
Second.
Any conversation, discussion? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. On items seven and eight, just for the general public, they are removed. This has to do with money that we will receive from MnDOT for, it's about two and a half million for the design and engineering drawings for the 77th Street underpass. There's some paperwork that we still are being requested to fill out, so they've asked us to delay it and make sure that that gets through. Once it gets through, it'll be on the next item. So we will be moving forward still in July, so I'm really happy to hear that. Thank you. We have the consent calendar, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. The consent calendar, for those in the audience, contains several separate items which are acted upon by the city council in one motion. Once the consent calendar has been approved, the individual items and the recommended actions will also have been approved and no further action on those items would be necessary. We start off tonight on the consent calendar with consideration of the approval of setting a public hearing to be held on August 11th, 2015, with the consideration of the issuance of a new on-sale wine and 3.2% malt liquor license for My Burger at 6555 Lyndale Avenue South. Item B is consideration of the approval of resolution allowing the Richfield Department of Public Safety to accept funds in the amount of $37,964 from the Minnesota Department of Commerce Auto Theft Prevention Grant. And just for information, that would provide for two of these automatic plate readers that we mount on the front of police cars that can go down the street and read hundreds of license plates at one time and give the squad car a hip if there's something they're looking for. Item C is the consideration of the approval of an agreement to extend the easement as part of a site lease agreement at 7401 Logan Avenue South, that's the water tower, between the city of Richfield and T-Mobile Central LLC. Item number D is consideration of the approval of the encroachment agreement between the city of Richfield and the owner of 6253 Penn Avenue, allowing the existing building to remain within the county auditor's easement. Item E is consideration of the approval of a two-year use and indemnification agreement between the city of Richfield and Tom Price for the use of a 4,690 square foot strip of land along the edge of Lincoln Field. Item F is consideration of the approval of the purchase of an MT Trackless tractor with V-flow and snow blower attachments from McQueen Equipment Incorporated in the amount of $119,099. That's the piece of equipment for folks at home that we use to flower sidewalks with. It's a very expensive piece of equipment. G is consideration of the approval of resolution authorizing the acceptance of a grant from the U.S. Department of Agriculture in the amount of $2,743.66 and authorizing the Recreation Services staff to administer the funds in accordance with the attached grant agreement and terms prescribed by donors to operate the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, that's the SNAP program, at the Richfield Farmers Market. And that concludes tonight's consent calendar.
I'll move the calendar.
Second, I got a question.
To you, please.
We're talking about the liquor thing. Have we moved forward at all on the change in the Sunday liquor law, where they can start at 8:00 AM? You get what I'm talking about? I don't know where we are on that. And then will these all be retroactive, these approvals, when that happens?
Yes, I know that Mary is working on that with Betsy and Public Safety Department and, yeah, we're looking at moving forward with the 8 o'clock piece. And do you have any idea, Mary, when that might come up?
Mayor, Councilmember Fitz Henry, we'll have an ordinance ready to bring back to the council very soon, hopefully the next meeting or two.
Fantastic, thanks.
All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Councilmember Elliott, do you have item five?
Item five is a public hearing regarding resolutions for a conditional use permit, variance and preliminary plat to allow construction of a cluster housing development consisting of five townhomes at the intersection of 76th Street and Sheridan Avenue. In 2010, after the property had failed to sell for a number of years, the Housing and Redevelopment Authority purchased a six-bedroom, single-family home located at 251776th Avenue or Street West. The home was subsequently sold and moved in order to make way for development that would be consistent with the medium-density guiding of the comprehensive plan. In March of this year, the HRA approved the sale of the lot to the Greater Metropolitan Housing Corporation for the development of five townhomes. The property is zoned single-family residential and guided for medium-density residential, that's seven or 10 units per acre, by the comp plan. These designations are not consistent, given that the single-family zoning district allows for cluster housing developments at densities consistent with the comprehensive plan. The proposed townhomes offer 1,400 square feet of finished living space on the main level and include two bedrooms, two baths and an attached two-car garage. Buyers will have the option of finishing the basement for additional bedroom and living space. However, as proposed, the homes will provide single-level living. The development has a traditional design and height that will complement the existing homes in the area while providing some transition to the high-density housing complex to the east. The proposal meets all zoning requirements with the exception of lot coverage. The applicant is requesting a variance from this requirement. Cluster housing development regulations were adopted in 1996 and intended to provide additional opportunities for infill development and allow for a wider variety of housing choices. Regulations were meant to allow higher-density housing while ensuring that the design of that housing would be compatible with the single-family character of the surrounding neighborhood. There's only one other development within the city, Penn Place, that was developed under these regulations. Given this exceptionally small sample size, it is difficult to determine whether or not the regulations adopted in 1996 are truly workable standards. The applicant is requesting a variance to allow a structure that covers 39.4% of the lot, 4.4% more than what is permitted by code. Staff believes that the proposed variance is reasonable and will have no adverse impacts on surrounding properties. Upon completion of the development, the existing lot will be separated into five individual parcels and an association will be established to manage common elements such as irrigation and roof maintenance. The preliminary plat of the property describes the proposed land division. Staff, want to give us a little background on the historical context and the policies that are being at play here?
Sure, thank you, Councilmember Elliott, members of the council. You know, this proposal is exactly what the city has been looking for on this piece of property for a number of years. The property failed to sell by the individual owners and eventually the city was able to pick it up. We put out an RFP and received this proposal from the Greater Metropolitan Housing Corporation. This proposal meets both the zoning and the comprehensive plan guidance. What we're looking for when we zone a property, single-family, but guide it for medium-density is an attached product, which is what this is. It's at a slightly higher density than a single-family neighborhood, but it provides for infill development, exactly what you're looking for in a cluster development. Like the staff report says, the only zoning requirement that is not met is lot coverage. The proposal exceeds the maximum lot coverage by a little over 4%. But like Councilmember Elliott mentioned, we only have one other cluster housing development in the city. It's Penn Place on Penn Avenue. So we don't have a lot of experience with this and it's difficult for us to determine whether or not, in a broader scope, these are really workable standards. We feel like the proposal meets the intent of the regulations, fits in well with the neighborhood and meets the city's goals.
Here, this calls for a public hearing.
Okay, we'll open the public hearing. Are there people who would like to come forward to speak on this? This is a public hearing. Would people like to come forward? Anyone? Anyone?
Move to close.
Second.
All those in favor closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, public hearing is closed, council member.
Um, at this point, Your Honor, I would move to approve the resolution for a conditional use permit and variances to allow the construction of a cluster home development at twenty-five seventeen seventy-sixth Street West and approve the resolution for a preliminary plat of the Sheridan Villas addition.
I'll second. Um, discussion, council member.
I, I just maybe like to, uh, answer maybe the lady's question. If you look at the design of the townhomes, who, the people are gonna wanna be in there are seniors and disabled persons. The single level, we've heard a lot on the east side, especially from the elderly people that can't go on split levels and that. So I'm guessing, and it's my opinion, that what you're gonna see move in there are probably the elderly people who like the single-level type townhomes or the people that might have a disability. That's more the target area and that's what everybody's telling us when they're looking. We don't have it in Richfield and our seniors are looking for that, so.
One level living for a lot of people, a lot of people want that. Um, the other thing I wanna say is, you know, the development company was very gracious and worked with us a lot when we asked for some changes and how things didn't look like the garages and everything. And we really appreciate when, uh, you, you look at that and look how it fits in the neighborhood. So appreciate that a lot. All those in, is council.
Yeah, I just wanna say, I mean, you talked about a small sample and you talked about Penn Place. And I remember when Penn Place was being proposed, there was a fair amount of pushback and, and discomfort with, uh, with what was going in there. And it's a block, block and a half from my house now and it's very much a part of the neighborhood. It's, it's something different and everything, it's somewhat unique, but it, it fits. And, and I think it's a compliment to the neighborhood and I'm assuming these villas will be the same in the neighborhood they're moving into. So we've got a small sample, but I guess what I'm gonna say is when we do it, we do it right, small, notwithstanding the fact there may not be many of them, so.
We might do more.
Madam Mayor, I, I did wanna mention that, um, Eden Spencer with Gimick is here tonight. So she has heard the comments from the residents about the fences and, um, you know, that's not something that is required by our codes. Um, but it's certainly something that we can continue to talk about.
Would you like to come up and speak about it? Please introduce yourself and talk about your product. We're looking forward to seeing it.
Sir, my name is Eden Spencer. I'm the Director of Single Family Housing for Greater Metropolitan Housing Corporation. And yeah, we've been working with the city, city staff, um, all the council, the HRA to develop this. We're really excited about it. We have considered a fence and we were gonna kinda work with city through this process and also with our marketing team and, I mean, even potential owners. We, um, we are working with, uh, an agent from RE/MAX Results. And he has a publication that he sends out to a number of, um, households in a radius around this development. And we've actually already had ten calls of people interested in it. So we're really excited, um, the one, one level li, living, we found people are really looking for it. I mean, like we said, there's the option to finish more in the basement. So if you have people who wanna visit, you want more space, you want a family room, it's definitely possible. But in just finishing that one level, it's keeping the prices down a little bit for other people to get into the development. We're really excited about it. It's something very new and fresh and we really think it's gonna fit in the community. And I can take any questions that.
What's your timeline? What's the timeline?
We're hoping to be able to close on the property here in September and start right away, be able to break ground end of September, October at the latest.
Okay.
So that people could be in in the spring.
Oh, wonderful. That'd be great.
Yep. And we'll be, um, marketing it. We'll put a sign. We would like to take, um, some pre-sales and people interested. And if people get in early, they'd have the op, option to customize some things and, um, make some choices. Cause we have some things that are kind of all around the same price, but people could pick colors or finishes, stuff like that.
When you have an open house, would you invite the council so we have a chance to walk through?
Definitely, yes.
And look at this? This might be something we wanna do in a few other smaller places, too. I've heard a lot of interest from some of our folks in homes who are aging in place and would like to stay in Richfield.
Definitely, we'd be very happy to.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thanks. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Councilmember Garcia.
Okay, this is also a public hearing. And we're gonna be, uh, talking about the Audi dealership that is planned on the east side. This is a resolution for a primary preliminary plat for the Richfield Properties LLC addition that will combine four parcels, which is fourteen hundred seventy-eighth Street East, fourteen twenty seventy-eighth Street East, fifteen hundred seventy eighth Street East and seventy-one eleven fourteenth Avenue in order to allow construction of an Audi dealer car ship. Um, and I think we've, we've seen the plans and, and things have worked out because they were willing to accommodate us in some ways. The city council approved plans for a new Audi dealership at the intersection of fourteenth and seventy-seventh street on April the twenty-eighth, two thousand and fifteen. The proposal plat for Richfield Properties consolidates a number of parcels of land into a single legal parcel on which the new dealership will be located. The proposed preliminary plat has been reviewed by the Minnesota Department of Transportation, the city's engineering department and the city attor, attorney's office in naturally, community development. Prior to consideration of a final plat application, Audi will be required to satisfy, satisfactorily satisfactorily address all comments made by these three entities. There are no major i, issues that are really anticipated. And I, and I believe that's all we need. I don't know if, uh, if we wanna open up to a public hearing or maybe staff has.
Does staff have anything?
No, I'll just say that, um, given that you've approved the development, this becomes more of a housekeeping issue. Um, just getting the land ready, um, and prepared for the new development.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to come forward and speak to the issue of the Audi development? Anyone?
Well, no, I was gonna ask you, they were planning on doing, I think there's a spot there for like a community coffee or, or they were gonna plant flowers or something. What did they finally decide on?
The final plans include a public plaza or quasi-public plaza. It's not, um, a separate parcel. It will be owned by the developer.
Okay.
But the public will be welcome and will have easements and things like that over the area.
Well, that's very generous of them to do that.
It is very nice to have public spaces like that to share.
Yeah, absolutely. And I, it, it's, it's good PR, too.
We have a representative here. Do we want him to speak?
Yes, do you wanna come up and speak, please? It's a public hearing, you should come up.
Yep.
Tell, tell what's going on.
Excuse me, uh, my name's David Phillips. I'm the architect for the project. Uh, I give you a quick update. We're in the process of completing the construction document. Uh, we would expect to apply for permits late September, perhaps October, uh, early October. Immediately after your approval, uh, this spring, um, the landowners gave the required six months notice to the current tenants. So, uh, they don't seem to be interested in leaving early.
Okay. All right, I understand.
We would expect construction, uh, hopefully then, beginning in November for this project. And it will take, uh, probably till the fall of sixteen to complete with the project of this size, so. But everything's moving forward and we're very excited, uh, to be coming to Richfield.
Okay, thank you.
We're excited too. And I think that's gonna, you know, bring some life to that area.
I, I forgot one thing. Whoever got the funding for the underpass, thank you.
I think it's a, it was a joint effort, council staff or representative, yeah.
Okay, so anybody else wanna speak? Okay, then I move we close the public hearing.
Second, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the public hearing is now closed, council member.
Okay, so, uh, I move that we approve the resolution for a preliminary plat at the Richfield Properties LLC addition that will combine, combine four parcels, fourteen hundred seventy-eighth Street East, fourteen twenty seventy eighth Street East, fifteen hundred seventy eighth Street East and seventy-seven eleven fourteenth Avenue South in order to construct, to allow construction on an Audi, Audi car dealership.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Councilmember Howard.
I have consideration of the appointment of city advisory commissions. Uh, in January of this year, the city council made several appointments to various city advisory commissions. However, there continued to be some vacancies, although we're getting there.
I know, not many.
Following these appointments, uh, the city council continues to accept commission applicants and interviews all applicants. Applicants were received and a special city council meeting was scheduled, uh, for this evening, uh, to conduct those interviews. And so we have some recommendations here for some folks. And so should we read these now or do people have comments?
No, no, we read them out.
Sure. So we have three recommendations. That'd be Heather Gibbs, uh, for the Arts Commission for the, with the term expiring on January thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen. Sarah Sodora for the Arts Commission with the term expiring January thirty-first, two thousand and seventeen. And Simon Troutman for the Human Rights Commission with the term expiring January thirty-first, two thousand and seventeen. Um, and again, I think as we've came back with these, uh, we're all excited about, uh, people that are, have a lot of passion for serving and folks that have been in the city for various amounts of time, but all seem to have a real interest in serving in some way with their city. And it's, it's just exciting to see those folks.
Nice to see young people, diverse people.
And just a comment, so I saw a raised eyebrow that we found that there was an opening on the Human Rights Commission. During our interview process, we looked it up and saw it on the site. So hoping that to be true, that's where the appointment came from.
Yes. Okay, so we looked, I, I'd seen it when I was looking it up. So I'll move the slate of candidates.
Second.
All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Um, city managers report.
I, I guess I really don't have anything specific to report.
How do we get the ten million dollars? I just can't wait, I know. I just can't wait. What's the process?
For the ten million? Well, you know, um, I guess that's something that has to wait and, wait in line. Uh, the first thing we have to do is get this, the two and a half million dollar thing settled, get a engineering design. Um, and then we can start talking more specifically about how we're gonna get the, the, the mechanics of getting that, that ten million dollars. We are, um.
So they're not gonna cut us at like a publisher clearinghouse check?
No, no, they're definitely not.
Oh, man, I so wanna.
Full tabs or?
And you know, the only thing that comes to mind, uh, just judging from, it's complicated, is that sometimes it's to get some of these things finalized, like the two and a half million.
Yeah.
Uh, I'm, I'm, I'm assuming it's gonna take us a little bit of, uh, uh, red tape and paperwork to get going on that, on the ten million. You know, the ten million gives us the ability to start the negotiations, uh, for the land acquisition that we need. There's still a gap, even with that, uh, ten million. But, you know, I think there are, uh, opportunities on the horizon where we can get the, uh, the money to fill that gap as well, uh, going forward. But, um, it's a start and, uh, you know, right now it's kind of a step-by-step process. The first step is to get that engineering design going.
Yeah, and once you get funding is when they start to fund projects, too.
Right.
Yeah, so that's very helpful.
Yeah.
So we'll tap all resources. I guess I'll be knocking some doors for a while.
Yeah.
Any other comments?
You know, I would just suggest that, that the delays in getting this thing up and running may have a serious impact on my decision on whether or not I wanna run for, uh, cause I do, I wanna see it through and I wish.
I know.
Yeah.
I think we all do.
It's just something, it's been something that has been on the horizon for so long, you just hate.
It's such a huge, it's such a huge deal for the community. I mean, what it does, the, yeah, to connect us to the airport, to the Mall of America, to all of that activity over there. And what it means, I think, to, uh, future development on seventy-seventh street, future development along the Cedar Avenue corridor. It's gonna be big.
It's phenomenal.
Yeah.
Um, claims and payroll?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Seeing no further action, I call this meeting adjourned. Thank you everyone for coming tonight.